Let's go ahead and get started. It's awesome to see a full house this evening. Great to see everybody here. If we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Here.
Councilmember Albreton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
There is a quorum.
Awesome, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It is a special evening. Before we get started with our regular agenda items, I do want to just bring up Louis from South Broward Drainage District. Louis has taken over for Kevin Hart, who has retired. Come on up Louis. And yeah, and just want to appreciate you coming out this evening and giving us the opportunity to say hi and to congratulate you and just if you want to say a few words.
Appreciate it. Is the mic on? Yeah, mic's on. Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be here. I've been with the district for 29, almost 29 years. So I've been around, seen the whole transition of the town from its first inception when trailers were right next to our office to here. Many engineers through the town. Back from one of them Friday days with Werner Vaughn, Willie Nabong, Craig Hunger, Clete Sonnier.
Yeah.
And now we got a great, great town engineer in Rod Lee. Lot of time spent developing the relationship, lot of building, improving drainage throughout the community. Great relationship that's been nurtured through the years. Kevin, my predecessor, done a phenomenal job continuing to grow that. And I anticipate that we can continue to do the same.
Awesome, awesome. Well, we really should, we very much appreciate the partnership that South Broward Drainage has always had with the town. As you mentioned, a partnership that even at one point allowed us to have our town meetings in your building. So always been great partners with us in tremendous amount of projects. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Good luck and wish you the very best and we'll look for that partnership to continue.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. This is one of the best events of the year. There's no two ways about it. The scholarship is awesome. It's awesome from the standpoint of all the people that contribute to it, all the way the board really gets behind it. And Kathy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet. You, you, this is your presentation. Please walk us through it. This is awesome.
Thank you, council, and I'd like permission to address the audience if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just stand up and take over. So I made notes this year because I want to try to remember everything. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming to our very special night. Tonight is all about the kids, but before we get started on that, I'd like to talk about our village, which of course is you. It takes a village, and the Southwest Ranches village is amazing. I've said it year after year. And I think three rows across the board of scholarship recipients and their parents just is a true testament to that. And I have goosebumps in case you can't see it. Let's see, let me skip to my notes. Let's see, I'd like to talk about how the scholarship came about. As most of you know, there are no public schools in our town, in our town boundary, so our students attend schools where they're automatically disqualified from hometown scholarships. A small group of us came up with the idea to create a scholarship geared towards our students. The town graciously gave us a budget so that we could buy some fundraising supplies, not a budget for the scholarship, but they're helping us with our supplies, which was really the only way we can get started. And they sat back and watched us do amazing things. Every dollar given away is achieved through fundraising. And that is why your students, when they ask for their 40 hours of mandatory service, when they call me and they say, "Can I do phone work or can I do computer work?", I always ask, "Can you make money for the scholarship doing that?" And when we're giving away $50,000, I think that they get why we need this. And you would be surprised how these kids are creative and they come up with ways, whether they're physically able to go out and do the hours or if they're able to do our phone work or computer work. It's amazing, they're getting it done. Let's see. To date, we have awarded well over $200,000 in scholarships.
Wow.
And to put that in perspective, this is our largest recipient year this year, 24 kids. And I think there's six women on our board, and we're raising that kind of money. And it's not because we're all rich, it's because of the town of Southwest Ranches. That's where this money comes from. Our friends, our neighbors, our kids, our husbands, our wives. Year after year, we're flocking the same people and we're getting some new people. We're inviting you to the barn dance where these kids are serving you and they've never served food to anyone before. And it probably shows, but we make it happen. And that's a huge fundraiser for us. So each and everything that we do, and you show up for, and you enjoy, and you get frustrated, it's all, this is what it's about, that we're doing this so that we can fund the scholarships for our kids. We're a small, and if I repeat myself, it's because you know I can't stick to my notes, and so I jump around. We're a small town, and this is not only where we live and play, this is where we raise our scholarship funds. The civic associations and HOAs in our towns donate. The Shiva Vis New Temple donates. Tommy Cravillo donates, among other residents. FPNL donates. The Seek Youth Foundation has been instrumental in raising funds for our scholarship, as has Outback Steakhouse and the Women's Group of Southwest Ranches. I'd like to take a moment before we go any farther and provide certificates of appreciation to these three groups. So we're gonna start off with the, I have them in order, so let me just see what we're gonna start off with. The Southwest Ranches Women's Group. And if somebody wants to come up, I want to talk about that a little bit. So.
I feel like Clara should come up here with her flamingo mask.
Ah. So this year, you know, we've had some struggles with flocking, and we've had some people get grouchy, and we've had some people call the police, chase the kids, and I don't know why they would be so intimidated by teenage girls or pink flamingos, but, but people are. So when we decided not to do it this year, a group of women in Southwest Ranches who's kind of formed a group said, "We'll do it." And that was exciting, and it was different, and we didn't know what we were doing, and we just jumped in there. And I think what was so amazing about it is we had four flocks going, and during that flocking, I had to go out of town for like eight days. So I think Clara kept a flock going, Manon kept a flock going. I had two flocks, which I gave one to my sister and one to Rose and Jim Albrighton, and I'm like, "Just move them, just move them every night." I don't know who, where to take them, I don't know who, just move them every night. And they did, and it happened, and we raised $13,000 in flocking. Thank you very much.
I really love this.
Smile for Bob. Thank you. Okay. We have the Seek Youth Association. In fact, the entire Seek Temple. We have raised, we have raised, they have raised thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars year after year with the 5K. And many of us, even if we don't walk it, we sign up for it, and I walk it. But they have raised just a crazy amount of money for us every year, and they have carried our scholarship many years when we would not have enough funds for all the kids. And so thank you very, very much. Oh, and I just wanted to mention also that they've created a volunteer app that we're hoping to get all of our kids on, and it's amazing, it matches kids with volunteer opportunities and with locations, so that it's easier. If you need 40 volunteer hours and services to the town of Southwest Ranches for your scholarship, you put that in, and this app will direct you exactly to the different events that we have listed. And then, I don't know if our representative from Outback was able to make it tonight. Nope, so let me tell you what they do. So every year, the barn dance that we have, where these kids serve you dinner, and we enjoy ourselves, we have a little line dancing and some fun. I think the last four years, Outback Steakhouse has donated every bit of food that we eat for completely free. It's amazing. So they don't have kids that live in our town, they're just our local restaurant, and they have graciously, and every year it's kind of like, "Are you going to, are you going to please do?", and at the end, they're just like, "Okay, we'll bring steak and chicken and sides and salads." And it's really made this event possible, so that we can feed people and charge $50 each and maintain that money for the scholarship. Okay, so now it's my favorite part of the night. I'd like to recognize the amazing kids of Southwest Ranches for all their hard work. Southwest Ranches kids consistently shine across our schools. They're valedictorians, honor students, Silver Night winners, and so much more. Every year, I say, "I don't know this group of kids that well," and every year, I fall in love with your kids. These kids, these kids are running through yards in the dark to flock you. They're serving dinner at the barn dance, where many of you paid $50, and they've never served anyone dinner. These kids have each served 40-plus hours of community service and direct service to the town, forever forging a bond with their community and learning a civics lesson, which will follow them for their entire lives. These kids are giving to their community, and their community is giving back to them. This type of civic pride cannot be learned in any other way. The money presented tonight will allow student athletes to pay their monthly dues. It will allow kids to give up one shift a night at their job for more study time. It will allow many of them one more semester that they may not have been able to afford. I fall in love with your kids, this is really special. I'm sorry. As I call the kids' names, and they come up and tell you what year they're in and what their major is, take a good look, because these kids are our future. Sorry. And if the kids aren't here, and if their parents want to come up, they have a couple of options. They can come up and just take their certificate, and they can sit down, or they're welcome to stay and be photographed with the kids. When the kids come up to get their certificates, you have to stay and be photographed. There's no options. Madison Atkins. Give a hug and then. For everything she does.
Thanks. Madison's already in school.
Yes, so tell them what year she, his daughter's already started school.
We dropped her off Friday to USF, and she's starting her chemistry degree.
Here, they can't hear you.
Sorry. I said, "We dropped her off on Friday for UCF," or sorry, USF. She's starting her chemistry degree, she's, hopefully she's gonna be in pre-med. So thank you very much.
And she's a great kid. They're all great kids. Alexis Christensen. Allison Contraires. You have to tell them.
I will.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Yes, of course. We had a lot of fun flocking. If I missed, we mistakened and maybe delivered the flock to someone's home that shouldn't have been delivered to your home, I apologize.
It only happened a couple times.
It only happened a few times. But it was a lot of fun. Allison cannot be here tonight because she's living it up in the Dominican Republic right now. So she will be attending FIU. So mom is happy because she's staying local.
And she's a freshman.
And she's a freshman, and she's going into nursing. So thank you.
Alex Escalera. Give a hug me too.
Yeah, it's fine.
Tell them your year and what you're majoring in.
I just graduated. I'm going to the University of Florida for computer science.
Michaela Freeman. I think I saw her mom. Yes. Before she tells her, that is our bartender for the barn dance year for year, and makes it happen. But tell about Michaela.
Michaela can't be here tonight because she's working, unfortunately. She's working towards her bachelor's eventually in education.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Garner. I think we have a couple of them. Catherine Garner. So these kids are great, and their dad talked to me the other night, and I think they've already started school. But, do you mind? Sure you do.
So Katie just finished her freshman year at UF studying media, something with TV production. And Ashley will be starting her senior year at UCF in veterinary studies.
Thank you. And their dads were one of the parents that were telling me that this scholarship makes it happen so that his kids can go to college. They're picking up extra shifts, they're working every job they can get, and this $2,000 means, makes a big difference in their lives. Michael Harrington. Like I said, a lot of the kids have already gone up to school. Jessica Hartman. You gotta talk.
I am graduating this fall in international business.
I don't know what I'm gonna do when I'm gonna leave, lose these kids that have been here for four years. Samantha Hernandez. I thought she was flying in for this, but you know how it is when you're on a flight. Savannah Hodgers, my niece.
I'm going into my sophomore year at FGCU, and I'm currently studying biology.
And Savannah's been one of those kids, but like most of the kids I see here, that I think she was two years old when we started dragging her to these things and making her volunteer. Jacob Hurst.
I'm an apprentice in trade school.
He makes it sound so humble, he's amazing. Cassandra. You knew I wasn't gonna say the last name. You look very pretty.
I just graduated paramedic school, and then I'm going into fire academy.
Did I tell you these are great kids? Jenna Kipple. You have to tell about her.
Hi, I'm Jenna's mom. Jenna attends UCF, she's going into her third year, and she's studying environmental engineering and hopes to work for the town one day.
Megan Laffey. Good to see you, baby.
I'm going into my third year at UCF, and I'm studying mechanical engineering.
Oh, another one that we roped in and she ran with it. Peyton Lukey. Congratulations, baby.
I'm gonna be a freshman in the fall at Southern Wesleyan University in South Carolina. I'm gonna play basketball and study elementary education.
Caitlin Miana. Did I say it wrong? I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Hi, I'm Caitlin. I am going into my junior year at the University of Miami studying industrial engineering.
Another kid I've watched grow up. Alexandra Montgomery. Same thing, they were on vacation before the fall semester started, and they thought they could make it, but... These kids. I was like a homeroom mom in elementary school, they were in my classes. Gabriella Morales. So this next student can't be with us tonight. She graduated high school one week and had brain surgery the next week. And because of her dedication to college, she was determined to start in the fall. She scheduled it a week after graduation, and she's home healing right now. Michaela Prokovic. Lauren Ribirio. Jasen Preet Singh. And you can probably tell from the name, that's such a big contributor to our 5K and raising funds there. I wanted to say this wrong. Paranet Singh. Stand up here like a proud mommy to all these kids, and I get emotional. And then it's exciting because I do get to be a proud mommy. Madison Sullivan. Wait, you're gonna tell them what you're doing. That's my girl.
I just finished my third year at Florida Gulf Coast University, and I'm studying civil engineering.
That's all of our kids for tonight, and so if we could take a minute, and first, don't clap till I'm done. First, I want us to give them a big round of applause, and like I said, look at these kids, they're amazing. There's not one of them just barely getting by. These kids are amazing, and they are our future, and it's so much fun. As a kid that grew up in Southwest Ranches, I live on the same street that I lived on when I went to high school. It's fun to watch them grow up and be amazing kids, and consistently be the top kids in the schools, and the kids that we're hearing their names and hearing about, and you hear what they're doing, they're doing amazing things. So I just want one more round of applause for them. I'm gonna invite anyone here on the education advisory board to come up for a picture, and I want the town council involved. Bob, I don't know if you want to hand that off to somebody, but I want to remind you too, because we start fundraising almost right away for next year, that we had 24 kids this year, and my goal every year is 2,500 per kid, and we did 2,000 this year, so we got really close. It's important, this money changes these kids' lives. And I know it's so easy to say, "It's Southwest Ranches, they have plenty of money." It changes these kids' lives and the activities that they can participate in and the things that they can do. So when you get flocked next year, try to run out there and grab your envelope, and even if it's 20 bucks, every dollar counts. If you want to come to the barn dance, yes, the kids serve you, but they're getting better every year. And it's just a great, a great organization and a great scholarship. Thank you.
Bob's gotta come in, so gotta leave room for Bob way over here. Bob's lost weight though.
And I tell the kids every year, "I know you've got a lot going on, you're getting ready to college, there's no need to stay for the meeting. If you want to go outside, I have a big check, we can all take pictures with it." Not that we don't appreciate the meeting, but if you want to come outside and take pictures, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll just take a two-minute break here. Thank you. Yeah. The mics are hot while we're on the break. Testing, testing. All right, let's go ahead and continue on with our meeting. Before we get to the next item, I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Ruth Wolfe. I think, I think most people that have been in town for any length of time know Ruth. Ruth was truly one of the founders of our town here from long before we were a town. And she recently passed away at the, at the age of 99. So really a full, full life, and she did so much for our town. She would sit right here in the front row with Vinnie for years and keep me in line, keep us all in line. And just a really special sweetheart, sweet person, wonderful heart, sweetheart, and just, just a treasure. And she loved this town, she loved seeing us become a town and remaining the rural roots that we have. So sad to see her passing, but she had a beautiful, full life. So I wanted to recognize that. If we could just have a moment of silence. Great, thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is the public comment.
Sure, Mayor, we have four public comments, starting with Michael Katz, followed by Lori Parish.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Michael Katz, 15120, Whetstone Way, resident since July of 97.
Nice.
So I've watched it evolve. Firstly, thank you so much, council and mayor. Firstly, thank you so much, Councilman Mayor, for spearheading the recycling effort. We are really putting the pressure on Davy to catch us. Secondly, in this election season, I wholeheartedly recommend and endorse, we have debates with so many wonderful candidates vying for office. I, as a retired career public school speech and debate instructor, will humbly offer my services, no compensation required, to moderate these debates. Thank you.
Lori Parish, you're up, followed by Marion Allen, and then Joy McKee.
Today, as a volunteer, I went out and checked a property that was of a concern at our homeowners association last night. And I have one concern. I know you're going to zero waste and composting. The person that I visited, his and his brother's facility, are you going to have an answer about composting and manure anytime soon? Because I'm concerned if you don't take a position on that, the property appraiser's office hand may be tied. Yeah, nobody's, okay.
Joy McKee.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to...
Can't hear you.
Oh. Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I just want to tell our story with the property appraiser's office, specifically the agricultural division.
Can you name an address, please?
My name is Joy McKee and my address is 2247 Fletcher Street, Hollywood, Florida. So our story begins two years ago when Antonio purchased 2.3 acres of farmland in Southwest Ranches to board and breed horses. That was his dream. And then in February of 2023, Antonio applied for the agricultural classification of the property and I assisted him with the paperwork. Richard, our representative, submitted our evidence and our documentation in person and he received a stamped and dated receipt to indicate that the documents were received. And we were more than confident that our application for agriculture would have been approved. However, the application was denied for lack of evidence and we were shocked about that. We never received prior notification from agriculture that there were missing documents. And even more concerning is that bank statements, tax returns, driver's license, our credit card receipts were a part of the documentation that was submitted by Richard and that seemed to have mysteriously disappeared into thin air. We don't know who has our information and of course, identity theft was a big concern. However, luckily, we had scanned our documents and we saved them electronically. And since agriculture stated that they didn't receive our documentation, we emailed our documentation and we never received a response. We sent several emails and no response was ever received. Eventually, we had to file a motion with the Value Adjustment Board because we received no response from agriculture and our application was denied. We appeared before the general magistrate and we presented our date-stamped receipt, the proof of emails with the 18 attachments, and agriculture swore under oath that they never received our documentation. Unfortunately, the general master also denied our petition for lack of evidence because we wanted to print out our documentation, but we were not allowed to do so. We appealed the general master's decision and we are currently awaiting the final 2023 decision regarding our initial agricultural filing. Now to the present, April 29th, 2024, Antonio again applied for agricultural classification for the 2.3 acres of farmland in Southwest Ranches. I weighed the documents prior to submitting them. There were two and a half pounds, two and a half pounds of documentation was submitted to agriculture, again. But this time...
I'll give you just one, one additional minute.
Okay. But this time, what I did was I photographed every document, I copied every document, I scanned everything, and I also emailed the documentation to Marty Keir, William Barringer, and Patrick Shortsleeve, who I met at the property appraiser's office. I made him sign that he received the documents just to ensure that our documents would not disappear again. And then on, finally, on June 11th, we received a decision from agriculture stating that we were eligible for 0.93 acres of the 2.3 acres that we applied for, and this is for the horses. And the 1.39 acres was denied. We contacted agriculture for the reason for the denial. We were told we needed more documentation related to chickens that's on the farm, rabbits, and so forth, not our main concern, which was for the horses to begin with. So we have no choice but to comply and we hope that eventually we will get our agricultural classification for the 2.3 acres of farmland that we have been fighting forever and ever for.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
John Garotti.
Good evening, folks. My name is John Stephen Garotti and I reside on Southwest 162nd Avenue. It's been an interesting and informative last few weeks on my campaign journey. As you all famously know, I'm running for the District III council seat here in our lovely town of Southwest Ranches. I had the pleasure to attend the last Broward County Commission meeting and represent our neighbors and express to them not to vote on increasing the height of the landfill at Monarch Hill. That was interesting. That was a, it's a little different than here. That was like a bigger league, but that was a lot of fun. In the quest for zero waste, we have to get oriented to create that zero waste plan. If we don't create that roadmap, we're never going to get to our numbers that we need to avoid incinerators, to get to the future of a non-burning mentality, pretty much. Also, I had the opportunity to join the Broward League of Cities. Who would have thought that, huh? Good old John Garotti. But it was an amazing event. And I'll tell you what, they had their inauguration, I think their, their first meeting of the year. I brought my lovely wife, my better half, Laura Garotti. As a matter of fact, love you, mama, she's the reason why I'm here. I thank my business, John Garotti Doggy Daycare, keeps me out of the dealership. That's the industry I formerly come from. I actually met the superintendent of Broward County Public Schools. He comes from a rural community known as Belgrade. So agriculture has to be protected. He knows all about that. There's a few 4-H clubs that he wants to recommend. I told him, you need to come on over and have a little spiel at our next council meeting. It'll be very informative for our residents. Also want to thank all my supporters, my neighbors, my family. You know, it's, it's, it's an interesting time when you run for office, all your dirty laundry's out there, but it's okay. It's always been a little scratched up. What are you going to do? You know? It's called life. But, you know, lastly, very important to myself, I've got a minute left, I've got to see how I work my time. Lastly, but in very important to myself and many folks here in our town, we coordinated through the help of Davy PD and the help of Russell, I've got to send you that list, by the way. We, we want to keep the stray dogs off the streets. We, we don't want to have animal control, although they have a new president, we don't know how they react. Many times I've been called and coordinated through Davy PD to help out, you know, meaning, hey, this dog is either going to keep running the streets because the pound is full. And, you know, I, I along with Bruno's Happy Dogs, Goofy Pets, all the licensed businesses here in the town that take care of dogs, we will temporarily house them. I know there's a 72-hour window that we call them, whatever legal things we have to do. Keith, if I'm doing anything incorrect, you can guide me through Russell. But basically, I wanted to say thank you. Thank you to whoever supports me. And finally, with 11 seconds left, we will never need a permit, ever, to celebrate the independence of this country. Fireworks or not, the independence of this country doesn't need a permit. That's all I got for tonight and thank you guys very much.
Marion Allen.
Thank you.
Marion Allen, Sunshine Ranches Mustang Trail. A lot of you, and I want to thank our council. Every one of them was at the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Meeting last night. It was a fabulous affair. We got a lot of information from Fred Segal, President of the Farm Bureau, over 30 years' experience, and he came to give us a lot of information, which even I didn't know. And I thought it was a rather eye-opening for all of us. So at that meeting, we handed out the proposal for the creation of an agricultural department for the town of Southwest Ranches, so that we have farms, horse farms, nurseries, for our children, for future generations to come. We both agreed, Fred and I, that if we don't get a handle on the loss of our farms within five years, there won't be any farms left in Southwest Ranches, which also brought us to some of the confusion we're having with the property appraiser's office, because according to their Green Belt and agricultural law, they're not supposed to ask for insurance or liability for farms. And apparently, that requirement went out on the applications and renewals, which is now being straightened out. Marty had no idea this was going on. So we do have a meeting with Marty very shortly, with Steve, myself, Russell, and Richard. And we're going to work out why our residents are having so much trouble getting agricultural. You just heard from one client, there's many more. There was another one last night that you met. They have a beautiful nursery, they've been denied. And you know what? They're discouraged from renewing or trying to get another application in. Now, when we became a town in 2000, we had a choice. We could have gone with Davy, we could have gone with Pembroke Pines, or we could have become our own town. We decided to become our own town and to have agricultural and a rural lifestyle in perpetuity. Davy and Fred sent, Fred Segal sent this to us, Davy has a farm guide. And I want to email it to each and every one of you. It is a help to all the farms regardless what division, whether they have fish, goats, nurseries. And it lays out the codes, it lays out their rights, which is something that our people don't know how to find, they don't know which department to go to and get it. And if we have an agricultural department, it will be inclusive. And you know what? Fred said he's going to help Southwest Ranches create their own farm guide. It'll be our own, he'll help us, and it will be tailored to our own town. There's so much that we can do to help our residents, so much so that we can preserve, protect, and promote. Even on the property appraiser's website, they say they are there to promote agriculture. So I'd like, if any of our residents can hear this on YouTube, if you've been denied, if you've been asked to renew and renew with really cumbersome paperwork where you have to renew from scratch, I'd like to hear from you. Contact our town because we are very interested in hearing from you and helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
Final speaker is Mike Rodriguez.
Good evening. It's actually a pleasure to be up here tonight.
I can just give name, name and address, please.
Miguel Rodriguez, Southwest Ranches, voice of the people, and Cielo Farms. I'm sure you all know that I've been fighting Polio Koff. Every time I come up here, he leaves. Where'd you go, buddy?
Don't, Mike.
So I've been fighting, saying, when I was targeted, that I have had ag, that I have always had ag, from the state, from Broward County, since I bought the property. I am allowed to do events by the agritourism law. The Value Adjustment Board ruled in my favor. Everything that this gentleman has done to me, which is over 52 violations that I can prove. And I, I, I will come back to that. But I want you guys to know, I don't know how he...
This is not, I'm not going to allow personal attacks.
Well, I understand, but this is important for you guys. I don't know how the town attorneys inform you of what's going on, informs you that you're liable for your actions, for the way that you vote, for the things that are done to town residents that you guys know about and you do not stop. Okay? All of you are liable for all of this. This is an absolute disgrace, what this gentleman did to me. Okay? And I have more to say, don't, don't. I can smile too, buddy.
All right, all right. That's enough.
You have anything to say to me now?
No, no. Is there anything else?
No. Thank you for listening to me and I'm sorry that, I am so upset, but anybody, I've spent over $600,000 defending myself because of this guy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, okay. Public comment is closed. Any board reports?
Debbie Green, so I'm going to speak on behalf of the Zero Waste Advisory Board, just to kind of share what... There's been the kickoff where the town has, you know, put out their awesome PSA, sending out the mailers with the stickers to go on the recycle cans with the reasons why we need to do this. And we need to, we need to reduce our waste so that we don't have to deal with any possible incineration or rising landfills. What, we've also looked to the city of Gainesville, that is now a zero-waste city, and looking for some guidance in how they took all the baby steps to get somewhere. So we've started with some of these, you know, we got, you would kind of take little steps. You can't go from zero to, to be in there and have a zero-waste plan. A zero-waste plan takes some time and that's, I think that's, the advisory board is going to, we're going to start, we have homework, so that when we meet back in August, everybody's going to have their, there's a checklist you need to, that we will go through as to all the different services in different areas throughout the town that really will show the areas where we're lacking, which will be many. But you need to start somewhere so that you can find the areas and you prioritize. What are, which are, which of those items are things that we can have an impact on now and which things will take a little longer and then you readdress them continually? And then, and then I was just going to speak on the Zero Waste Task Force, just to let everyone know that our next Zero Waste Task Force meeting will be on Wednesday, July 10th, here at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. And also the Broward, Broward Solid Waste Authority Executive Committee meeting is meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at Government Center West, and, which is in Plantation, just north of Broward Boulevard. Anybody who's able to be there, this is going to be their kickoff meeting with the, the consultants to create the master plan. So while we now, we have a executive director that seems to be on the right path, is hearing the voices of many of those on the, on the executive committee, we just need to keep that pressure on and make sure that as they build this master plan, that it stays within that vision. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other board reports? Seeing none, board reports, council member comments?
I'll go.
Okay.
Ta-da.
There we go. Thanks, Gary.
Just some real quick announcements. I know there's a debate in an hour and 10 minutes that we're all, we all want to see, so I'll be very, very quick here. Just some FYI stuff. First off, good evening to everybody and thank you for being here. It's really kind of important that everybody stays involved. The July 4th, Thursday, the Town Hall is closed and Code is putting out the fireworks and animals don't mix signs throughout the town. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that. The Mayor's Chess Challenge is on the 20th of July, 10 to 2, at Town Hall, right here in this room. It's a fun, fun morning, on a Saturday morning. Bring your kids, they can learn how to play chess, or they can, you know, beat the adults.
They can beat the mayor.
Beat the adults. Saturday, the 29th, that is this coming Saturday, from weather permitting, from the window of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, I put PM, it's AM. Weather permitting, Broward County mosquito control is going to be aerial spraying throughout the town. They are using, the, the ingredient is Diprom and the active ingredient is Nailid. I know there's been some chatter about a different type of in, pesticide used, and the, the information is incorrect. The DMV Flowmobile is back and it'll be here in August on the 28th. If you need to make an appointment, please call Deborah's office for that, correct Deborah? That's still a procedure?
Right.
Okay. And I set it up, it's a great way to get your license renewed, tags, et cetera, anything that has to do with DMV. It's right out here in the parking lot and it's ultra-convenient, really good thing to... And it's ultra-convenient, really good thing to, 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 to participate in, if you need it. And also, we have, and I'm gonna close with this, we have a photo contest going on through September 9th, for the calendar. The theme is, what makes you proud of Southwest Ranches? Have a picture on that. And, last thing, I just want to bring this up, everybody say hi to Aster Knight, he just came, he slipped in. And he's one of our founding fathers, and he, he was one of our original council members, vice mayor several times. And we're glad you're here, Aster, thank you for coming. And I'll close with that, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Mayor, I'll jump in if you could, I'd get just a couple of quick things, if you would. Jim Albritton, District 3, I am the incumbent. I think most of y'all saw the signs out there on the truck, I am running for reelection. I've been a part of this town since 1985, when I moved out here, got involved, I went to a lot of the meetings when the town was being formed. Currently sit on several Broward boards, representing the town. And I am glad to see that we have people joining the League of Cities, which is a wonderful organization, which was bad-mouthed for a while, but now I think they realize that it's a decent organization, and it's glad to see new people joining the organization. All right? I'd like to say to Ms. Kathy Sullivan, what a great job she did. If we could give her another round of applause. I don't think people understand what that honestly means to her. When she was speaking, it was from the heart. She donates her time, her effort, everything. That whole committee is committed to the students that participate. Want to ask everybody to please be respectful this 4th of July of your neighbors. I know that the state of Florida says that the 4th of July, New Year's and New Year's Eve, you can set off fireworks, anything from an atomic bomb on, but be respectful of your neighbors, at least talk to them, say hi to them. I am in absolute agreement that the 4th of July, for me, is probably one of the most important holidays that we have. I did have the privilege of serving, to protect that right, and I'm damn proud that I did. And I would not like to see that go away. But be respectful of your neighbors whenever you do it, if you would. The other 362 days out of the year, we do have an ordinance that says, use fireworks that don't make as much noise. They cost more, come into town, get a permit for it, and you can shoot them off. But just be respectful of your neighbors, all right? And with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Good evening, folks. We're coming into budget season now, so that affects our taxes. And when I say budget season, believe it or not, Emile and his team start in February, and they work on it all the way through October. So they have an eight-month budget season, we've got about a month or so. The reason I'm bringing it up is, we've got our, our only budget workshop on August, excuse me, yeah, August the 13th. And that's probably the most important of all of them for you to attend. That's where we walk through the budget, department by department, the capital projects that we're looking to get done in the next year, and we discuss it. The two meetings that follow that are formalities. We still have discussions on the budget, but for the most part, the millage is set. If we're going to contribute money towards the road improvement project called Tisdor, that's when that'll happen, as well as, we have other things we're locked into, like the Davie Public Service Contract. We don't negotiate that every year, we just negotiated a 10-year contract, there's step-ups in there, so of course, that has to conform, you know, our, the taxes we pay towards public safety, will go up a little bit every year, and we have the same thing on the solid waste side. Solid waste contract has got certain step-ups in it as well, on an annual basis, to cover inflation, et cetera. So the most important one is on the 13th. We have two more after that. The public, the first public hearing is on September the 12th, and then the second public hearing, and these conform with our council meetings. The second one is on September the 26th. So if you're interested in understanding how the town works from a financial standpoint, and public input is always welcome. Before I was on the council, I didn't miss these meetings, because I wanted to make sure we were doing the right thing with our money. So if this type of activity interests you, and you want to be involved, I would encourage you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. Yeah, those are important dates, encourage everybody to be there. Yeah. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. David Kazinsky, District 4. Let me begin with my monthly, with a crime and safety report. Basically, I'm summarizing the traffic citations in the town for last month. District 1, there were four speeding tickets, total of five citations issued, four speeding. Those are on exterior roads. District 2, three citations written, one speeding. That was on Griffin. District 3, 44 citations written, of those 44, 25 were speeding, and of those speeding, nine were on the interior roads. Those are the big concerns for us up here, the interior roads. I mean, yeah, it's, it's bad that they're speeding on Griffin, but the interior roads are where our animals run, where our children play. So that's what's important, is our interior roads to me. District 4, 87 citations issued, 50 of those speeding. Now, of those 50, 18 of those are on local roads, and by far, Sterling Road was the biggest culprit with all the speeders. There were 15 citations for speeding on Sterling Road. That is a big concern for my district. And I get the calls. My number one complaint, through my phone, is, David, they're speeding, David, they're blowing stoplight, stop signs. It's a big concern, so hopefully, we can keep Davie Police working on these speeding. It's important to every one of us. Folks that are driving around on Hancock have noticed the road has been blocked for quite a while. The developer is installing some drainage, and it's part of the development, they're redirecting some of the drainage that has been approved. If everything goes as planned, it's supposed to conclude tomorrow. However, there's always something that comes up, and there's always a possibility it could get extended over the weekend, but it will be soon open to, through traffic, so keep that in mind. Now, the other thing that, one of the big issues, that Maryann's issue is with this, with the ag issue, promoting ag in our town, I'm really not thrilled that, I'm hearing about people making applications for equestrian breeding facilities that are not being allowed their ag. I think it's something that is the heartbeat of our town. So hopefully, we can get something working with that. And I do want to recognize that Fred Segal, and give him a shout-out, thanks for working on a Southwest Ranches Farm Guide. I think that is really important for our town. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will wrap it up.
Great, thank you, David. Appreciate it. All right. First of all, Aster, welcome. Great to see you here. All you've did, all you've done for our town, and all the involvement you've had. Your Park Foundation is alive and well, and doing awesome work still. So your legacy and your work continues. So thank you, Aster, great to see you here this evening. All right, I wanted to touch on a few items. I also wanted to touch on the, the ag department, and that, appreciate the information that was given last night, that was a great meeting. The document that was used there is a, is a work-in-process document, so it's been going back and forth between administration and residents, and certainly not in its final form yet, but it is, it does capture a lot of the issues that we're concerned about. So we appreciate everybody's work on that, Maryann. And once, once it's actually completed, I know, Russell, you've, you've gone over it, and you've had some very specific comments and things that you want to see. We're gonna have a, a meeting with Marty and his department on July 3rd, I'm really excited about that. And, and so we'll have that, and, and we'll be able to take what the residents have provided, what we hear in that meeting, and hopefully, come up with a final document that, that we can all agree on. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, the most important thing is that we have a good, strong partnership with the property appraisers department. And, and so, so that's, that's, that's the key to, to all of these meetings and all of this discussion, that is the key, that, that we, we work on this together. No process is perfect, everything can be improved, and so we're hearing some things from our residents that I believe we, we can work together to improve. And that's, that's really where, where we want to go with that. So, we will, we will have, we will continue this process, we're gonna have the meeting on the 3rd, and in the not-too-distant future, once that document is, is in place and we're good, then we will set up another meeting, we'll, we'll put an agenda item on one of our council meetings, so we can really dig into it and share it with the community. I'm gonna break protocol here for a second. Mila, do you have a question or a comment?
I just wanted to address the deus in the community. Good afternoon, Mila Schwarträg, General Counsel for the Broward County Property Appraiser. Thank you for giving me a moment. As you aptly stated, we do have a meeting with the town next week. We have all of the statistics of the number of applications that were received, the number of applications granted, and the way we work with the members of this town, as well as every other town and municipality. We are helpful in every which way, we like the open dialogue, we also like a respectful dialogue. We respect you, I know you respect us, and clearly, the members of your community. So we, as well, are looking forward to our meeting next week, to be able to share that data with you, to have an ongoing, open relationship, and better serve you, you better serve us, and your public. So, thank you.
Awesome, great to hear, thank you. Thanks for coming out this evening. Okay, I did want to also talk, respond as far as the zero waste and the composting, the mulch. We have a committee, a board, town board, that is working on a number of those, specifically the composting. And so, we are providing them input, and hopefully, we will be getting back some feedback from them, as far as plan, and, and recommendations for that, come back to the council. So when that comes back, we will then be in a better position to take action on that. And then the last thing, I just also wanted to weigh in, 4th of July is, is such an important holiday for, for our community, but for our country as a whole. And, but it has historically been disruptive to the equestrian community and others, there's really a lot of, there's, it's more than just equestrian, but that, that is one of the bigger ones. And so I just wanted to encourage folks that, you know, the 4th is the day for the fireworks, the 3rd, the 5th, those are not the days for it. Please stick to the 4th. And for the equestrian community, we do have, if you have never tried the, the earplugs for your horses, we do have ones here in town that you can use, you can try out, if you like it, then you can get kind of the perfect ones for your animals. But if you just want to see how that works this year, please come by, pick those up. I would much rather have them out there in the community being used, than being in a closet here at Town Hall. So I really encourage you to do that, and let's make this 4th of July a great celebration, but also a safe one for everyone and our animals. Thank you. All right, so then with that, wrap up that, is there any legal comments?
Just real quickly, Mayor, once again, I did the sentiments about Kathy Sullivan and the Ed Board, very impressive fundraiser and allocation of funds to some incredible kids tonight, it was great to see. Finally, I echo your sentiments about Ruth Wolf. I met Ruth in 1981 at Sunshine Ranch's HOA meetings. Although she spoke softly, she carried a very big stick, and she was always a calming voice in, in the chaos of those original days, way before we were Southwest Ranches. So she will be missed.
Thank you, Keith. Administration comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege to welcome our newest addition to the team, and I wanted to introduce everybody to Christina Semerero, she's our new procurement Christina comes to us from several different municipalities that she's worked in in the past, has a ton of experience, she has the NIGP certifications that we, we would need in this position, and we're really excited to have her. Only eclipsed in elation by Emile Lopez, who's even more happy to, to have her on board, because he's been carrying the water along with the rest of his team on the procurement side. So, welcome aboard, Christina. I want to also give you a quick update on a few things. One is, as Councilmember Kazinsky mentioned, traffic is continuing to be an issue, or speeding, I should say, in our town continues to be an issue. The Public Safety and Traffic Committee took up this issue as a, as a point of, of personal focus. And in working with DVPD, we've developed, or working on developing an ops plan to address speeding in the town. So there's going to be enhanced traffic enforcement for the rest of the fiscal year, that we're working on. The plan will come to you, we're working on some of the final stages of it, so we'll be presenting that to the Town Council in the very near future. Okay? I also wanted to talk about the Southwest Meadows Preserve restroom building. We've been working on that facility for quite some time now, and as you know, we have ARPA funding that's obligated, or that would need to be obligated for that project. And so, I just wanted to present some, some options. So we brought before the Town Council, we, we brought the renderings before you in the past. We heard the community's concerns about the renderings, and was told that it wasn't rural enough. We went back and worked with the architect and our design team here at Town Hall, and we've revamped the drawings on it, and made, made some concessions there, made it look more rural. And then we also, the last time we presented it, we did get some feedback about the location. So I wanted to talk about the locations, and talk to you about the benefits, the pros and cons about each location, and get further direction from the Town Council. So option one is the, basically the original location, and some of the concerns about the original location were that it was too close to, I'll paraphrase Newell's euphemism of the donut hole of the property next door to it. And so, the concern was that it was too close, and there was concerns that possibly people using the pavilion might throw, you know, rocks at horses, or there could be some, some concern for the horses there. The original cost of the roadway for this option one, for the road to be constructed that comes off Griffin Road and goes to the restroom building, was estimated, and again, these are very conservative estimates, at $720,000 for the cost of the roadway. This option one places the building 50 feet away from the, the adjacent property to the west, which is the required setback. The assumed walking path from the event space on, in the five acres, and the proposed restroom building at its, at the original location is 340 feet. Okay? So we looked at a couple of options. One option was to move it, and being sensitive to the concerns about how close that restroom building was proposed to be to the adjacent property, moving it even further east, so an additional 64 feet, so a total of 114 feet away from the adjacent property line. Doing that gives us two advantages. One advantage is, it actually reduces a little bit the cost of the roadway from $720,000 to $692,000. It also shortens the estimated walking path from the event space to the restroom building from 340 feet to 320 feet, so it shortens it by about 20 feet, which is nice. However, because of the orientation of the building, where it would be, there's a couple of things that need to be considered. One is that it would require a western sidewalk to be built, at a, an estimated cost of about $12,000, so that the money that you save from the original design has to be, you know, that has to be factored in, so it's not that much of a savings. And in addition...
Excuse me, Russell, just, just, so I think you're describing option two, can we put option two up there?
I apologize, I thought it was up.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So this is option two, and as you can see, the building now gets moved further east. And so, the, the walking path gets shortened up a little bit, and the cost of the roadway, because it smoothed out a little bit, and shortened a little bit, it actually costs a little bit less to construct. However, the, there's, there would be a required sidewalk on the western portion of the building that would be needed to be, to be constructed at a cost of about $12,000. So that has, appears to have some, some advantages to do that, however, one of the things that this does is it further impedes into the ballfield areas, or the playground areas, or the, the multi-use play areas, field uses. So we would be using up more of that for parking and the like, and so it's not as preferable an option as option one. Okay? I want to walk you through now to option three.
Russell, before you go one, two, three, you're talking about a sidewalk. Why would we put a sidewalk in over, say, a trail, you know, that would... Why would we put a sidewalk in over, say, a trail, you know, that would be packed material?
Well, because you have parking spaces there if you're going to need, remember, there's like a maintenance closet back there. If you're going to be bringing in supplies and things of that nature to the maintenance closet and so on, you would need that sidewalk area. There's also the pavilion there on the side. You would want to have a sidewalk there potentially for access to the back area.
We generally don't do sidewalks. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. We also have the two ADA spots in the front there, so you would want that sidewalk to be utilized for anybody with, you know, mobility issues.
Thank you.
The last option, option three, was a suggestion by one of our residents, which was to move it even further away, further to the north and further east of the original location and also location or option two. And this option actually is the costliest option to do as far as the roadway design. It would increase the roadway design from $720,000 to $748,000. And also, the estimated walking path would go from 320 feet to 390 feet, I believe is what it says there. Yeah, 390 feet. So, for that reason, option three is, from staff's perspective, from the architect's perspective, the least favorable option. So, again, we go back to option one for its many advantages as being the preferred option of staff and the architect. This is what we would recommend to the town council. I can tell you that while I haven't personally spoken to the adjacent property owner, staff has spoken to the adjacent property owner and explained to them what we propose to do, and there has been no issues expressed. So, I'm basically seeking direction from council for support for option one, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Russell. So, well, I have some comments. I'll let, go ahead, go ahead.
Just a question. Russell, we have the farmer's market there every weekend. Have we had any issues between the public that comes to the farmer's market and the horse area? Or have the owners of the horse farm complained about any activities from the farmer's market?
No issues have been reported. And from all accounts, from staff, the adjacent property owner actually welcomes it, is very open to the farmer's market and appreciates that it's there.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Great. Thank you, Bob.
David?
I'm just, I'm kind of inclined to go with option two. Just my preference, looking at all the options. I kind of like the way two was laid out, a little further away from the horses, but not so far away that the costs are really, really high.
Right. Gotcha. Okay.
That's where I am.
Good. Thank you, David. Jim?
A quick question. Russell, how much more of the space, the ball field, would be taken up?
With option two, you mean?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you can just toggle back and forth, I don't know the exact footage, but you can see how that tee turnaround there juts into almost the middle of the ball field there. I don't know the exact footage. I can call, if I may call up December. December, do you have an idea of what the exact distance is? Sorry to call you up.
Russell, she's coming up. One quick question. How would option one or two interfere with the parking for the carnival each year?
Well, so, that's a good question. So, option one, as it's laid out right now, you know where kind of parking takes place right now. If it's dry, obviously, you know, people park kind of everywhere. But we always seem to have a little bit of rain around that time. There always seems to be a little bit of issue with it. People could still park, if you look at your renderings, it's hard to see, but you have like numbers there for the certain field areas. So, you know, six, area eight, area five, would all still be very well in play. And if, obviously, if it was very dry, they could park in four as well. So, you would still have a vast amount of area in option one. If you were to choose option two, certainly, you're going to cut into the amount of area where cars can park. It would definitely jut further east and certainly impact the number of cars that you could, you know. I mean, it is a parking lot and a roadway there, but it would, you know, I don't know how that surrounding area would be stabilized in that orientation, so.
Yeah. December, if you can address Jim's other question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, let me, let's finish up with Jim first.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Dan, could you put up option two again, please? So, this is a little inexact for you, but if you notice the area where the parking spaces are delineated, that's probably, I don't have the actual numbers, but that's probably approximately 120 feet, based upon the number of parking spaces and the general width of parking spaces being nine to 10 feet wide and the width of ADA spaces being about double that. I know that our town engineer knows those numbers off the top of his head, but he may not know the distance of the road where it tees is a little bit less than that, but it does jut further out. So, we're taking, the orientation of the parking is now perpendicular to the orientation of the building. And, you know, another choice could be made, many other choices could be made, but this is the rendering where they came up with what would be more cost-effective. And so, and as Russell stated, those fields, and I know that the residents may have questions, those fields are supposed to be multi-use play fields. They're not supposed to be stabilized parking. We're going to stabilize parking because we know how we like to use that area. But we also have to have ball fields. And we're not going to build ball fields with, you know, all the formalities of ball fields, but we do have to provide that. We're afforded grant funding in order to do that. So, we don't want to just cut right through it all with buildings and stuff. We want to kind of put those amenities as close to activity areas as possible. And that's the reason why we're kind of onboard more with option one than the other options.
Great. Perfect. You good, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Here's my question, and it was germane to that time, but Russell, we're eventually going to connect to Dykes Road, right?
That's the plan in phase two, correct.
Okay. So, that connection is going to have to curve up and over because of the ditch on option one.
Right.
So, we're really splitting the ball fields. So, I don't know if we can really count that at this point. That's what's going to happen here in phase two. So, if you go to option two, it's a straight-line shot.
Yep.
Okay?
Out to Dykes.
Where it ends, where it tees, it's a straight light shot to, because the drainage ditch is right there at that line that you see to the right of the tee on the long bar. So, to me, option two would probably be the better run because of that. It's going to be less costly in the long run.
Gotcha.
I'm just thinking ahead, you know. Option one is fine also, but it's going to have that long S-curve kind of driveway to get to that, to get to Dykes Road. So, I think we need to factor that in, is all I'm saying.
Good point.
You know.
That's a good point. So, where is the exit going to be? Is it that, I see the drainage there. Where would the exit be?
It's kind of hard to say. I don't have a pointer, but...
I know exactly where it is.
Yeah.
Point it out.
It's exactly straight across.
Yeah.
Is it straight across?
It's pretty close to being straight across.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah.
Yeah, it's exactly straight across.
You know, I look at it, I got to say, I'm probably most comfortable with option number two as well, especially given Gary's point there. That's a great point. If it's going to be split anyway, you know, there's still a lot of room there. I know there's wetlands in there as well, but there's still a lot of room, I think, to do. I guess the question I would have is, if we were to go with option two, are we doing anything that we are not going to be able to meet our grant requirements?
I would say no, but I'll defer to December to answer that question.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. And no, the answer is no. We could put something smack dab in the middle of that field and use the area that is further to the north and use maybe some of the area that is further to the south. It just bifurcates a more open area. And as far as the exit out to Dykes Road, we did in option, before option one became what it looks like today, we did have an iteration that lined that up better. And it didn't provide the tee where it's located. And I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater because option one has an advantage that, you know, the way the tee is in that picture isn't exactly where it necessarily has to be. I don't know. There have been many drawings done of this. And when we, when we had to create that, it was because, first of all, we know that phase one is, you know, we're trying very hard to reach the financial burden of phase one. But the entire project included that road going out, and it was specifically lined up so that it was not in conflict with the drainage project, so.
Great.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, December.
Yeah, Bob. Russell, I could ask you this question, but it might be better and more appropriate for Rod.
Rod.
If we can go to option two. The only concern I have with the road alignment there, Rod, is if we did just extend the road directly to the east from where the building is going to be, would we be out of, we have any issues opening that road up concerning Broward County? Yes?
Rod, come on up, please.
Yeah, we have discussed this at length, and there is an issue with the proximity of that, you know, that exit or entry with the proximity to Griffin Road, and we did discuss that. But Rod, if you can just elaborate that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, it's my understanding that it's going to be a temporary thing, right? So, it's not necessarily that we're not going for a permanent opening there. So, part of the discussions that we've had is, if you have a roadway that's going right into it, is a county going to see that we're trying to plan on using that access permanently? You know, that's kind of the stuff that we've been discussing. So, I don't think we're going to get a permanent opening if we go through the county, if that's the question.
Okay.
At that location.
How about an option one? If you could flip back to option one? That's certainly further to the south.
Yeah, so in this option, we'd basically have to reroute and go back up to the same point. So, what we're trying to do is to be able to use that access point situationally when we have events and things like that. But we don't necessarily want to show that we're using it permanently, but it won't be approved through the county.
Either way, we, it's going to be a permanent access as opposed to permanently open.
Correct.
Excuse me, temporary access.
I know what you meant. Exactly.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Rod, if I understand this correctly, Rod, we would probably be using the exit to get on Dykes Road on, just at special events and things of that nature. So, we really don't need to asphalt it. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
We could hardpan it with hard rock or whatever you guys call that.
At the entrance.
I'm not an engineer, but, you know, like we have in other areas. Okay, you know, if we do that, then option one is probably the better way to fly, you know, because we can actually still use the roadway as a recreational area. I mean, you can do it.
I get that, I get that it's not paved, but if it's, if it's rocks and hardpan, you know, I'm thinking about the entrance into what we use for farmer's market today. Okay? It's not paved. It's just hard rock. But would I have kids playing on that? Absolutely not.
Back up for just a second. Think of the trailer parking area at the Equestrian Park. That's hardpanned. The side parking area at Rolling Oaks Park, that's hardpanned. And I think there's a couple of areas at Country Estates that are hardpanned, and kids play on them. And stuff, you know, tents go on them and different activities happen on it.
So, it wouldn't look like a dirt road. It wouldn't look like a dirt road. We plant grass.
It's grass, but it's got, but it's got rock underneath it, about 46 inches down, so you don't bottom out.
I think it depends on how often it's going to be used.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I have strong hesitations. It's one thing to say, you know, that people can walk on it, it looks kind of green and it's okay. It's another thing to play sports on something like that. I'm not comfortable with that. I got to tell you, I'm not comfortable with it. I just don't think it's a safe surface.
You'd rather asphalt it and then just use it on special events?
No, 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 I'm not, no, I like the hardpan better. What I'm saying is, it doesn't sway me as far as one or two is concerned, because either way, whether it's asphalt or whether it's hardpan, I don't think it can be part of a playing surface.
Right.
Okay. I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. So, asphalt, I prefer the hardpan to the asphalt. Okay? Because I think it looks better.
Cheaper and looks better.
Yeah, and it's more, looks more open and it looks more like what we want. But in my mind, when I look at options one versus two, it's, either way, it's a road that I wouldn't want kids playing on.
Sure.
Yeah.
One more question for Rod, if possible. Rod, there's three black lines that look like they go through Dykes Road, almost in line with the building on the right side. Is that drainage?
Yes, sir.
That's the proposed?
248-inch culverts that are coming across Dykes Road. Yes, sir.
So, then placement of the road we're talking about, temporary or otherwise, is there any impact that that project is going to create on that road? In other words, are we going to have to be crossing over a canal or?
Yes, it's affecting the alignment of that roadway, which December alluded to, which is why we have to go north. So, in that configuration of option two, it is pretty much a lot more of a straight shot. Where here, we'd have to, on option one, you'd have to angle it back up to go north of that 248-inch improvement.
So, that's unplanned money at this point. Okay, so, I'm looking really good.
That was that S shape I was referring to.
Yeah. Could you go back to option two, Dan?
Where it was option two.
We'd be north of it there. Okay.
Makes more sense.
I'm sold.
So, I've heard, I've heard comments in favor of one, in favor of two. I personally am leaning more towards two, to be honest with you. I just think that's straight shot. It's, it's...
Much less expensive overall.
It's less expensive and it's less impact overall to the amount of space we can use.
I agree. Mr. Mayor, I agree with you.
So, are we, Gary, what do you think? Are you still in favor of one, prefer one, or what's your thoughts?
If it was up to me, I'd pick two.
Oh, okay. All right. Is, are we, do we, Jim, are you okay with, what's your thoughts?
Two, B.I.
Two, Bob?
Yeah.
Good. All right. I think, I think we have a consensus for option number two. Do you need a vote on that, or we're...
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you have a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we choose option two.
Thank you.
David seconded it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This is the ultimate, how do I say this? Going against everything that we set the boards up to do. Not one iota of discussion has taken place among the Parks Board, the Infrastructure Board, or the Rural Arts Board. All three boards should have had input on this problem. This was done by the administration, working with their architect, and we did not see it until recently to have any comment whatsoever on it. I would hope this council will instruct vehemently staff that the boards are not to be ignored on any infrastructure, parks project, or decoration within this town. Otherwise, it's the first step you have taken tonight, or before, by your not knowing, towards, as what I call, the cookies and coffee klatch boards, where things that are 100% already done go before them and said, "This is what we're doing. Just wanted to let you know. Have a nice evening. Here's your cookies and milk." That is not what our boards were set up to do. They were to work on, and I hope in the future, this will not happen ever again. And I hope this council will make sure that it doesn't. And as far as my personal opinion, item, can I have one more minute?
You can have 30 seconds.
Okay. Number two is the best of a worst situation, except that it should have been 90 degrees angled from what it is right now. And there, it would still be where people step into it being exactly the same, but extend further east away from the paddock area. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Any final comments from council? Seeing none, if we can, please call the roll.
This is for option two, correct?
Option two, yes.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, I just want to make a comment that, so, tonight, we do have a national debate, and I believe that there's a lot of folks here that want to hear that, so I would like us to go to about 8:45, and if we, and I don't know if there's anything on here that we must talk about tonight, but I just assume...
You want to move through it?
Move through it, and we still have 15 minutes, so we can do more, but if there's anything that we need to absolutely talk about tonight, I would like to agenda change to put it now, and then if far as we, if we have anything left over at 8:45, I would propose that we table it to the next meeting.
I have a lot of comments on item number, where is it?
The Miramar one?
Yeah.
Yeah, item number, what is it?
Number 11?
11, yeah.
Yeah, item 11. I want to move that, but I won't be here till the end of, end of July.
Oh, we need to do that. Well, let's, why don't we do, the water one should be quick, and then, then let's move on to the Miramar one, and we'll do our best to be done by 8:45, if we can.
Mayor, just real quickly, for agenda purposes, we can read nine and 10 together, those are the water.
That would be fine.
And then you'll be left with 11, which is the one that Councilmember Jablonsky wants to speak about, and then you have the FPNL staging area, and then approval of the minutes. For the FPNL staging area, we're going to have members from FPNL at the next meeting anyway, so...
Right, right. So, then if I can ask, we don't get to that, Russell, if you can, I know we've had calls and things, if you can update the other council members so that they're up to speed on that, so that when we, when FPNL comes next time, we're all, we're all on base. Good, all right.
So, Deborah, will you read nine and 10 in together?
Certainly. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water services to 6951 Appaloosa Trail, real property lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansions of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, providing for an effective date. Item 10, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City, providing water services to 5775 Southwest 130th Avenue, real property lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve nine and 10?
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any comments on this item? Seeing none. I do have one quick comment. I just want to note that these properties have the ability to get their water from whatever source they want. They're not restricted in any way from getting their water from Pines, or Sunrise, or any place else. I believe that is, you know, it's fair for them, and it should be fair for everybody in town, as I've made that point in the past. Any public comment on this item? Please come up to the mic.
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang and Appaloosa. Where on Appaloosa Trail is this going to be?
6551.
Is this a residence? Okay, so, here's my concern when you get Sunrise or one of these water companies coming in. They're looking to get everybody else in on that, and they'll take the hit to bring the initial one in. A lot of us have spent $10,000 on deep wells, we get the purest water available, no PCA Bs, I mean, our water is tested by the county, and my water came back pure, drinkable. That cannot be said for water treatment water, and that has fluoride, it has chloride, chlorine in it, it has all other kinds of chemicals in it, and livestock cannot drink city water. I've done studies on the biological hazards to animals, never mind humans, to drink it, but we don't drink it because we buy bottled water. You can't do that for horses, and you can't do that for our cows. So, my concern is, how easy is it going to be for them to force me to go onto their system, pay for the water in, water out, and how do you water your lawn on a public meter when you have two and a half acres? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary Ann. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Mayor? Yeah, I want to address that real quick, because...
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to bring to your attention, there's actually a little bit of a typo on here, on the, I believe it's the resolution header, I think it was brought to my attention actually by Councilmember Hartman. The address on the resolution says 6951 Appaloosa Trail, and the agreement says 6591 Appaloosa Trail. I believe it's 6591, not 6951. So, just, for the record, I just wanted to make sure we have the correct address.
Can we, we need to amend the motion on that?
Yeah, we can.
I'll amend my own motion.
In a second? Okay, so amended, as amended. Just speaking to Mary Ann's point, there used to be an issue where, when water came in, others could be forced onto it. Keith and the legal team was able to resolve that, that's no longer an issue. So, each one is independent, and it's, each property can make their own choice. Yes. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Both motion passed with the amendment.
All right, great. Item number 11, please.
This is a resolution of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, opposing Miami-Dade County's siting permit and construction of a solid waste energy campus at the Opa-locka West Airport site, and authorizing the town administrator to execute an interlocal agreement between the Town of Southwest Ranches and the City of Miramar, Florida, for the City of Miramar to lead the town's opposition. The expenditure of the amount of $30,000 and zero cents to contribute to the legal services to oppose a solid waste-to-energy facility and providing for an effective date.
If I could get a motion and a second on this, I suspect there's a lot of hesitation just for some discussion, if we want to vote it down, or whatever, whatever that, that's fine, but I just want to be able to discuss it here for a few minutes. We're not going to be able to discuss it. All right, well, the motion fails. I'm very disappointed in that. I don't know what to say. No, we can't, we can't, because I didn't get a second on it. All right.
Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do is make a motion for a resolution opposing it.
You can do that.
What just happened?
David made a motion to oppose doing...
For a resolution opposing the, any incinerator.
Vice Mayor, you want us to bring back a resolution opposing a incinerator in Miami-Dade County?
Why don't we adjust the one that we've got here, sitting in front of us? All right. Okay, so, that item fails, or doesn't get a second, we're done with that. Let's approve the minutes, item number 13, we can do that, and then we'll adjourn.
We have time to mention the staging area.
No, we do have a few minutes. All right, so, so the staging area, let's talk about that just for, well, let's, yeah, we'll talk about that briefly, just to kind of give an overall. So, so we had a call with FPNL, Russell, Keith, myself, and we, FPNL is looking for partners to be able to stage their equipment in an emergency situation, and we are looking at potentially using the location at Dyke's and Griffin to be able to stage them right in that section where we have the Farmer's Market, that same area that is already, you know, solid, high ground that can be used. And, and so, the, the advantage to that, you know, really, they don't have a staging area that's close. In our conversation, it sounded like they didn't even have one in Broward County, I may have misunderstood that, but that was what, that they indicated, was that they don't even have one in Broward County. So, it would be good from a partnership standpoint. I think from a, you know, the question came up, hey, will they be able to handle and give us, provide power faster? And the short answer was no, and I think that's the official answer, because they have their own protocols, they clearly went through their protocols and said, you know, hospitals, these types of things, and they walked us through that, and then residential. And so, so certainly, having them there is not going to bump this up above, you know, hospitals or other emergency-type services. But, once we get through those, and we're just dealing with residential, there's another prioritization that takes into account what happens there. They did not want to indicate that we would get preference, but if you're right beside it, I'm thinking you're going to get preference a little bit. I think it's going to help, certainly not going to hurt, but if they've got to come from Palm Beach County to provide restorative services here, or if they can just drive down the street, I think we're going to, we're going to do a little bit better. So, so I think there's some advantages there. I also think that it's just the right thing to do, to partner with FPNL and be a good community service. If a, if a storm comes through, we are not going to be using that area for a Farmer's Market or anything else, so it's just going to be sitting there vacant during those times. Let's let a partner use it, and I think there will be some benefits to the town. Before I open it up, Keith, anything I left off that you wanted to touch on?
No, just that FPNL's Head of Emergency Service Response will be at the town, I believe the next meeting, he said, for you to all, to directly ask FPNL any questions. The mayor grilled him for a solid hour, and he has proposed an agreement which we'll bring back with the resolution on the next agenda.
Right, so, yeah.
Two concerns. The location, I'm worried about a whole bunch of heavy equipment sitting on top, not sitting on top of, but staging daily in and out of that facility. I think it could do some serious damage to the area that we use for the Farmer's Market. Second thing is, we'll have a brand-new restroom in there, that I'm worried that these people that come in from points unknown, that may not have respect for our facilities, could destroy it pretty quickly. So, if we do decide to move forward with this, I would hope we'd have a strong contract in place, that A, they need to put the Farmer's Market back the way they found it, and B, any damages done, and they ought to also pay for maintenance of that place while they're using the property.
Yeah, it's a great point, and it was a very specific point that I brought up while they were there, so we did talk specifically about that. Their, their equipment is designed for zero facilities wherever they go.
Right.
They're fully, fully operational within themselves, so the, they would anticipate not even using any of our facilities that are there. However, however, if they are there and anything, they, that is in the contract, Keith talked about it as well, that they, they will restore everything back exactly as it was before they showed up.
So, we can lock the bathroom doors while they're there?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I have a tremendous amount of experience with this FPL staging.
Yeah.
Through my past work.
Right.
Our big parking lots that were in shopping centers and all, were used as staging areas, and we had agreements to feed all of the FPL contractors and FPL, and for all the emergencies, and it's a really good partnership. I got power pretty quick.
I'll bet you did, I'll bet you did. Yeah, I mean, they can't say that, but it just makes sense.
Yeah, they're, they're right there, and they can, they can wave a magic wand.
Especially if you're cooking their dinner, I guess, but, yeah.
Yeah, we won't get into all that, but, anyway, but it's a good, it's a good deal.
Good, all right.
Do you need a motion?
No, just, this is just, they'll be back, and we'll, we'll talk about that, and this is just to bring you up to speed, Snow, so that you got it, all right? We good?
Bob addressed my concerns.
Perfect, okay. All right, let's do the minutes, and then we are done. So, we've got the minutes from May 9, 2024, a regular council meeting. Is there any additions, corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any from the public? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.